Okay, this next question is for our District 4 candidates. And again, if you would all, when you stand up, please just say your name. And this is a question that actually came up on our candidate commission forum when we did that. And it's obviously very important to people in South Tampa. I'm going to take a moderator's prerogative here and add just a little bit to it because this question comes from one side of, given what I live and I like to kind of balance things out. Would you support the Gandy community in their opposition to the express lane proposal to build an elevated roadway down the middle of Gandy Boulevard? Or would you support connecting the cross town to 275 to improve Hurricane D-3 and the queue?
Well, let me say that my first move to Tampa, I live right down there and I'm very familiar with that road. I think what we need to do is take a look and see, and I know there's businesses out there, being part of the business community in South Tampa, there's businesses out there that have some serious concerns about what it's going to do, the beautification that might take away from the area, plus what it could do to their businesses as well. I'd like to take a look at the studies and see whether they're going to prove, improve that those things are going to happen. I personally think that if we can help create a little bit easier path with traffic that anyone who's been on Gandy, you know, knows the traffic down there, it's the brush hour, the light there. I think if there's ways that we can ease that, let's see if we can look at that. I think there's a way to get jobs for folks that want to go to those bridges, or this elevated roadway. And I think we need to take a look at those studies. But I also understand that there are major concerns for folks, especially people that are on Gandy and their concerns about their business. Thank you. That is Myers for District 4.
Good evening, District 4. I support the no-Gandy overpass. I have done this for the other areas of Virgin Atlantic, and I've seen some of the issues with 19. And yes, you can look at it both ways, but I know I've been told by a lot of transportation that people are definitely in case of hurricane, maybe you can have a reverse travel flow in both ways to no to get the overpass.
I am also opposed to the overpass. I think it has bad for businesses down there, puts out, puts, puts involved the South Tampa community. The neighborhoods are against it, the businesses are against it, I am against it, I don't think it's a good idea, and I don't think we should do it.
I'm very supportive of District 4. I'm also unalterably against it. And I believe that creating additional hurricane activation of the Gandy Bridge and into South Tampa is a very, very bad idea.
Mr. Stenson, did you ask this question?
I am totally opposed to the elevated expressway for the sole reason of wasting taxpayers' dollars to beautify Gandy Boulevard just to rip it up again to a mixed expressway.
All right, this next question is for our District 6 candidates. Would you favor moving the city council elections to November to coincide with state, county, and federal elections?
That's up in debate. Let me say that that happened in the late 70s. It used to be in the same state, all the elections. They moved it, I was ordered to be voted. I was against it because I thought less people would participate. However, to realize where it is, when you're now going to the big election with all the big money, and it takes big money out of everyone for those offers, you'll be worthless to people wanting to hear about you. You will be left out of being a cloud. So I think that these types of forums may not be held, and that they are with all these communities involved, neighborhood communities, so that you can see, hear, and express, see the body language of all candidates. So I think I would be opposed to it because you cost much more money to run then, and you put the candidates already in that herd mode. And you have absentee voters, and then you have the elections. So in essence, in one election, you already have three elections that we have to worry about and raise money for. It's very difficult to grow a office. Thank you very much. And 72 AM on the north end, so my opponent, Ross Ross.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. No, in my experience, it's hard enough for people to understand what District 6 is, what District 4 is, or what District 5 is, without having the county races and the state races thrown in the mix. So I'm off on my own track. I'm opposed to moving it because I think on a local level, you know, the issues that the mayor addressed and the city council addressed affect people's quality of life so much that it's important that we have a separate dialogue on these issues. You know, I'm open to hearing people's arguments in the other direction, but that's my opinion. Thank you very much. Kelly mentioned it. So let me say that I'm driven a little bit indoors by five-term city council member at Lengasol Center, and you can also check out my website at okelly.org. Thank you very much.
I'm really going to think about the candidates also through hearing to the, that's right, you do a great job of that. Our next question is for our District 1 candidates. How do you strengthen economic development's burning business growth in the city of Tampa?
Mike Suarez, District 1. I have a plan to help small businesses grow. There is a motivational tax revenue fund right now that is going to the general fund this year, and we can use that money to create a small business loan program with those businesses that have been here in Tampa. And we can use that money to help them expand their operations and also hire new people. They would repay us based on how many jobs they create. So as an example, their percentage that they would repay us could be lower based on the number of jobs they create. It's about a bunch of money, the number of jobs that they're able to get here in the city of Tampa. The Economic Development Committee goes out and signs businesses to bring in here, but there's very few things that we can do here, except for my plan, can help grow the small businesses. Thank you very much.
High-speed rail will create approximately 90,000 jobs in this area. Light rail will create additional 30,000 jobs. On Hillsborough, on Hillsborough areas, intense going to work, we're very close to the state legislature this upcoming session to make sure that there's funding to build light rail from downtown Tampa to the airport. And we're very close with the government to ensure we approve high-speed rail, make sure we create jobs. Economic Development is going to generate 18,000 bank for 17 years. I serve the city of Tampa, which is probably going to answer the highest returns in history in the nation's farm. So we need to create jobs for every regulation that is there that needs small business, small businesses on Tampa, Tampa. We need to create some private business and private, thanks very much. Again, first stop to the council.
Well, we want to talk, this is our District 1, citywide, we're doing the city we vote for. There's three types of emerging economies right now, Texas cities, they're doing well. One is where there's huge federal government dollars coming from, like Washington DC. We're not running that, Tampa's not running that. Another type is the type of cities down in central Texas where they have large reserves of oil and gas. We don't have large reserves of oil and gas, we're dealing with general resources. Another type of city is San Jose, California, where they have a high intellectual base, where they have a good, strong educational platform, and they also have a good transportation system. We need to modernize our transportation system, and we need a strong educational base. We do have the Christmas Santa quarter, the 9th Marches in the United States, but we still need a modernized transportation system, light rail, and connection to high-speed rail. Thank you.
Wait a minute, Scott, for District 1. The truth is, if government doesn't create jobs, government creates the opportunity. Now, what we can do is look at new and commanding businesses and offer them incentives, cash rates, tax breaks on permanent fees, start across. By doing that, we're creating something that did not exist before, therefore we're creating jobs, creating that opportunity. Thank you.
Rick Barson, City Council, District 1, citywide. For starters, businesses, they're choking. They're literally choking. The city needs to learn some belief, and give, and give all of these businesses an opportunity to prosper. Once we prosper, then those businesses will have an opportunity to expand. And when we expand and when we prosper, what's going to happen, our, one range is going to go lower. Once we have, once we have those minimal things that are necessary in our economy, transportation will follow suit, and safe neighborhoods will come right after it because we all want to have a great, safe neighborhood, delightful headcount, each and every single night. Thank you very much. I'm Rick Barson, City Council, District 1, citywide.
Our next question is for our District 3 candidates. If large numbers of residents oppose a land use or zoning matter, how much of their input will you consider to the road? Say your name and answer your question.
I'm Jason Wilson, we're in District 3, citywide. So we had this issue recently on city council, and city council thought a lot about the issue with cigar city and the zoning issues there with cigar city. It was a difficult issue for city council because there's a lot of support for these that were coming from, from other businesses around town. There was a lot of resistance in terms of where we were briefly meeting. We have to balance that. It's a pole, it's a plug, it's a pit, it's a, it's a, we have to balance. We have to have a plan where we can have a vision for Tampa for tomorrow, but we also have to take into account which neighborhoods want to grow, how they want to grow. Originally Starbucks, they got Starbucks, they came and, I'm starting to release some heights on the Starbucks that came to their city. How Starbucks ended up becoming a revolution of this small business in the city, or in that area, of the reminder of the independent offices of small businesses, which were originally about a big market. So it's some kind of multi-use balance that we need to do.
Once again, Seth Nelson, District 3. You must listen, that's what I started the presentation with earlier today, and every day. So obviously, yes, I want to hear from you, I want to listen to the neighborhoods, but you need to study the issues from all sides. The main problem right now is with all of the zoning that come up for a change is that it, called it, runs with the lane. So once you make that change, if there's a bar there, or a license, a wet zoning, as we call it, even if it's a great business with great people funding it or running it, they can sell it and something else can move in, and you're still stuck. We need to look at how we do all of our zoning, how we are working together, and absolutely have to listen and make reasonable decisions, and if we disagree, we'll know why and how I got to that decision. Thank you, Seth Nelson.
If you would, I'd keep coming out on the right side. I'm a fiscal conservative, I'm always going to be right or set. I'm a native zoning, heated out, and that's the neighborhoods. In fact, our busy was one of the third biggest tax halls of city government, the county commission for awareness. It all went on to be a planning commission, conservative years, as the county commissioner addressed the land zoning issues. Let me tell you what you will have to make. There will never be ex parte communications with anyone. That means nothing out of sunshine. It is going to be totally transparent, fair and square, and that is my commitment to you, and that is my commitment to our children for the future. We need to have a community we all want to cherish, live, work, raise, and family. And that's our future. Thank you.
I'd rather listen to these questions on land use issues. I was endorsed by Chris Hare, General Lieutenant, and former city councilman, and county commissioner George Chalora, because they know that I can lead. Here's an example where Tampa deserves better, our community deserves better. City council has become an appellate for land use issues. That's not the problem. What I propose to you, we give a specific example, we just had the right, the right cell that was mentioned yesterday. What I intend to do, is I intend, I intend to bring those folks together in the spirit of bringing the press in case there's any sunshine issues, that'll take the whole thing, load it up there on TV, along with the city council meetings. I'll say to the right cell of folks, I need you to have breakfast ready next Tuesday for 30 folks from the association. And then I'm going to go get the association folks, and call them in and say, I need you to give over rights, we're going to have breakfast for it. And then we're going to sit in that room, and we're going to hammer out a compromise. Goodness, it should be Carter, if you do with Egyptians and Israelis. I mean, I know associations and small business folks from the larva heads, but leadership is getting these folks together and hammering out solutions. That's what leadership is like, allow. That's what we've got to do. Thank you.
All right, our next question also came up in several forms, and was well selected by our panel, is a vulgar question. How do you feel about the light rail? And if you think we should adopt it, how should we plan for it?
Thank you. Scott Scrivina, District 2, which is citywide. Light rail and still rural transportation. Certainly understand that the city of Tampa certainly has transportation needs. We continue to rank the Lord more to, if not dead last, in terms of our transportation. Large businesses that are relocating across the country are looking at transportation and valuing that as a criteria. We want to be competitive. We want to stop other states from eating our lunch, and other cities from taking our businesses. We need to improve our transportation. Ultimately, the transfer referendum did not pass, the funding mechanism of the sales tax in 2010 was a bit to swallow. And secondly, if Oregon asks individuals for a tax, in fact, our people have a good detailed plan. Ultimately, people felt that the plan is not specific enough, and that there was holes left, and they didn't have a full understanding. But we need to address our transportation needs, I said down in Hartford last week, and I'm excited to see we're moving north with a few bus projects called Metro Rabbit, which ran fast track buses going north and south, also east and west, and I think that's a good area of leisure to take. Thank you, Scott Scrivina, District 2.
I was very much to support the light rail. We don't have any way to move people around Tampa, they can get in their own car, or put your feet on the board very well. We don't have anything affecting the kind of transportation. I thought light rail would be good for us. I didn't like the plan they laid out because it wasn't in plan. They didn't tell you what the costs were going to be, they didn't tell you what the roads were. They gave you a couple of choices on the northbound route, gave you a couple of choices on the east-west route. They told you what they thought might be the capital cost for one of the north establishments. The other one, they didn't even tell you. Small footnote said, oh, we're having to start figuring out the cost to acquire the CS6 right away, and then they asked us to approve it. Doesn't happen. Give us a better plan, give us the actual cost, give us a better way to pay for it than the progressive sales tax. Personally, one sentence is going to kill me, but there are people that it will. I don't have a solution yet, but we need a better way to finance it, but we definitely need a better plan. It was insufficient evidence. Susan Wong, District 2. Thank you.
All right, candidates, we have one more opportunity for closing remarks. One minute for each one of you, and I've been asking all of you to, when you stand up, to give your name. Usually when I'm on channel eight, my best is to put the word Jeff Patterson, so I don't have to say my name, I'm going to ask all to do that again. Our panel has actually found a bit of a curb law here, because they selected one question that is really good for everyone that is here, and affects us all, especially those of you who are very active in the neighborhood association. So they'll kind of include this, if you will, in your closing remarks. What are your thoughts on the role of neighborhoods for city council?
Dennis Myers, candidate for city council right there in South Tampa. Thank you, guys, for having me. I wanted to thank you that the vote put together. I also wanted to thank my wife for putting up with me as a candidate and all the things that go along with that. I'm really honored to be here, really honored to talk to you guys about my vision of Tampa. I want to be on Tampa City Council because I want to make a difference. I love Tampa, I love South Tampa. I want to work for the big mayor, bring the city forward, help create jobs, I want to promote businesses, and I know something about that. I've been involved in the community, I have my own business, and I've worked for the chamber and the workforce alliance, and I want to, this is where the rubber meets the road, I want to help get jobs out there. As far as, as far as the budget, like I said, nothing is off the table, but I'm going to work with them to make sure that every single dollar you spend is maximized for the city. Thank you very much. Dennis Myers, for the first city council, District 4.
Also, of course, with strong neighborhoods make a strong city. I have been very active in all my neighborhood associations. Where you see Blue Side, if you want to stop, talk to the people, they'll tell you. I've been active in our community, PTA, neighborhood associations, setting up crime lodges, and being the advocate for the person who didn't have a voice in the neighborhoods. This past year, as I said, I've talked to people on Davis Island, dealing with Tampa general issues, their historic pool, Hyde Park, their historic, historical district, to Belmar Shores. There's an opportunity with my background in corporate sales and marketing, I would like to be proactive instead of reactive to our issues. I think with my background in sales and marketing, I am very customer-driven oriented. So I'm probably going to work a little bit harder than most because you're the boss, I'm the public servant, I'm not a politician. I think we forgot that we're a public service. So if you are voting early, which starts about February 19, February 19, don't forget your chickens.
Tony Cisito, City Council, District 4. Throughout this campaign, I have knocked on 12,000 doors, or probably many of the, if you wouldn't hear me talk to me, or if I left something at your door. I think that's important, I think it's important to hear what's going on in the community. Obviously, I'm very introduced myself, and I hope to earn your vote, but I also think it's important to find out what's going on in the different neighborhoods. You can't always do that. I won't always have the campaign time for issues. I think neighborhood associations, they're very important because they're able to be a conduit from which we can learn what's important to the neighborhoods, what's going on in the neighborhoods. And if I elected the city council, I will take very seriously what the neighborhood associations have to say. I also want to emphasize, you've talked about a lot of issues here tonight, but I've also written out a 12-page policy document. You can find it at thetampaplan.com or my website, tonycisito.com, and it has all the issues in there. And I think it's important for candidates to really lay out one thing, and put it on paper, and lay it out for everyone. So if you get a chance, please take a look. Thank you for your time, and I hope you vote for me on March 1st, Tony Cisito, District 4. Thank you.
Harris Collin, District 4. Thank you very, very much, everyone, for being here tonight. I also believe that strong neighborhoods are the foundation of a strong city. But I also believe that getting spending under control is the thing that is really going to be staying with us in the years ahead. I'm going to come back to this issue over and over and over again, because if we don't get the budget under control and make the top decisions now, eight years from now, you're electing another city council, they're going to be looking at a much, much tougher situation than what we have to face today. Let's make the top decisions now, let's swallow our sleeves and get to work, and this city can be the greatest city in America. If we don't do it, we're going to fall behind.
Neighborhood associations are the best voice the citizens of Tampa have to the city councils in America. But if you don't have time to state your opinions, no one's going to hear you. That's why I want to propose two more nights a month for the homeowners' associations and the citizens of Tampa to come speak to the city council on the issues that face their neighborhoods. When the mother took a stay home all day long with children, and the person who's going to his own, she says, honey, watch your children, I'm going down to help the city council, I will be. We can't do that. Without neighborhood associations, the city of Tampa would just run fine. The city council, the mayor, would just make decisions, but we need to hear from you. We've heard a lot about this city, comparing it to other cities, Phoenix, Charlotte, Salt Lake City. I think Tampa is head and shoulders above those cities. We have a deep water port, we have a right to work state. We have no state income taxes. This city should be more than what it is.
Thank you, Charlie Maranda, candidate for council, District 6. During my term of office for these four years, I'm back to mayor, sort of doing what you've done in public work, this goes hand in hand with neighborhoods. In 2007, we went from 1.228 million in road repair control order to 5.2 billion increases, or many of you at that time, so we could have a better place to live in the city of Tampa. On Sidewalk is an old street, go to the lights, go for it. We went up about $200,000, so people know what they're at, and head off and visit, and we're here walking around, seeing where you got to go. Let me also say on Sidewalk, we went from 1.7 billion in 2007 to 2.9 billion in 2011. In that time, we never forgot the neighborhoods, and that's what this city's all about. And if you remember, there was only one individual city council that voted against a state, and you looked at it, because it was your money, and it belongs, or you needed back in your interest. Thank you very much for helping neighbors, these votes weren't first, I appreciate you for considering.
Kelly mentioned Tampa, City Council, District 6. I'm an advocate for strong, thriving, vibrant neighborhoods, and I have worked on these issues for the past 15 years, in my own neighborhood, with the planning commission, with my neighborhood association, trying to create better coding, to encourage small business growth along some of our commercial corridors, some of them that have been neglected over the past few decades. I'm a scholar of Florida history, I went to graduate school for it, and the Florida Studies Program at USF, I taught these issues. I understand what happened when river renewal cut through our neighborhoods, and cut highways through West Tampa, Ebor City, my own neighborhood in Seminole Heights. This campaign that I'm running is about building communities here. It's about understanding the relationship between vibrant, strong neighborhoods and the big picture with our economy and the quality of life here in Tampa. I will work hard as a city council representative to represent you and your neighborhoods. I will listen to you. If you have an issue with social towers, I will talk to you about it. If you have an issue with, this is outside, thank you very much. Kelly mentioned it.
Mike Suarez, District 1. The building blocks of any great cities and neighborhoods that we have, and the neighborhoods that we have. Right now, we have some great neighborhoods in Tampa. What we can do more to try and help them become a better neighborhood. We are talking about economic clusters, places where people live, they shop, they work. We've done very little to help the neighborhoods grow and prosper over the last eight years. We need to do more. Because, you know, Tampa is our home. It's a place that we live, it's a place that we can have fun, it's a place where we want to raise our families. Unfortunately, city councilmen, all of us, people up here, aren't going to be enough to help solve all the problems. We need you. My name is Mike Suarez, Tampa's our home. Let's make it better. If you have any questions, please visit mikefortampa.com, send me an email. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you very much for this forum.
First, folks, folks in council, District 1. Thank you very much for talking with us, and to you all tonight. I got my start in a neighborhood on the Tampa Bronx CD. Sitting out here right where you are now, I want to discuss the issue with the Tampa neighborhood. I'm a strong character, I'm a strong neighborhood. One thing I'd like to see us do, another thing I'd like to propose, if Tampa Bronx had a CD, we have a 10% district to East Tampa, we have a 10% district to West Tampa, I'm sorry, not West Tampa, but Ebor City. I'd like to see the town of Tampa control a lot of the tax dollars that we all pay for the system. To, to take those tax dollars, control, to control the health of every neighborhood. Every other community is doing, I'd like to see you all doing here in South Tampa. You all go around, you all have a good living in Kansas City. You all know the issues are, speed bumps, common areas, no way for the city to do it, propose, and do that, create some type of 10% district here in South Tampa to allow you all to spend those tax dollars, control the system. And I understand, folks, in the council, District 1.
Okay, I'm going to talk really fast, I think I'll have to say on this one. Neighborhoods are the backbone of our community, they create our tax base. I was there 10 years ago, the Sunday, when they were trying to put the bypassing, the first time, the DOT was trying to do with that. I was there when Kathy Castro was running for county commissioner, and she stood up and said, I will fight for you, and I got the vote again. I will fight for you this time too, because I believe in neighborhoods. I'm not just up here talking. I, I am definitely involved in this sort of thing. I was there when the city guys tried to build high rocks at Soto and Bay Shore. I followed that using my engineering experience, just like I used on Gandy Sunday. I poisoned the same type of structure down at Bay Shore and Bay of Bay, and also in the Great Hampton project up in North Tampa, where pesticides were being dumped into our drinking water supply, main drinking water supply, the Hillsborough River basin. That was a part of, also, the committee of the Tampa base here. So I'm just saying, I'm going to be a part of keeping our neighborhoods together. I mean, I do it. Thank you. Mark Swatter.
Neighborhoods are the building blocks of our community. Tampa's a great place, we all know that because we live here, we need to make it better. Tampa government works hard, we need to work hard, we need to sharpen our pencils. Tampa government works hard, it needs to work hard, it needs to sharpen our pencils and tighten our belts. I'm asking for your vote on March first, because I want to make me one campaign boss, and that is going to be that I will listen. I will listen to you now, and I will listen to you on City Council. We need a better relationship between our neighborhoods and our city government in order to make this a great place to live. Thank you.
Rick Barstow, City Council, District One. I believe the initial question was talking about if the city government and whether the City Council and neighborhoods should work together and be more involved. Absolutely. Without our neighborhoods, we're simply nothing. My friends, March first, we're going to make a decision, and we're going to vote. You are going to vote. If you are looking for someone that has got the business savvy, that understands business, that knows how to cut a paycheck, to cut payroll, if you're looking for someone that is looking for the future, not twenty years from now, or three decades, but fifty years from now, if you're looking for someone that is looking for safer neighborhoods, you're looking at me. My name is Richard Harrison, and I'm running for City Council, District One, Citywide. Thank you very much, and enjoy your evening. Thank you.
Jason Wilson, District Three. This is the beginning of the conversation. It's a conversation that I started two months ago by volunteers walking in the neighborhoods to walk to observe a neighborhood from Fort Tampa to Utiama. We've knocked on doors, we've all talked about petition. This is the conversation that's going to continue. We continue to be every day as a medicine doctor. I figure if you all are soon, I write those stories, they're sitting home, that's why I was telling those stories. We have, we don't buy our own issues, budgets and neighborhoods and transportation, but what we need at the end of the day is somebody who has a vision, because these issues will change. You have to have somebody who is sensible, accountable, who comes back to the neighborhoods and who you can trust and work through these issues for you with that vision in mind. I hope to see you get, no, not to see you work in the arts department, I'd like to see you to neighborhoods or back on your tour. I want to continue this conversation, but I'm going to vote on March first. Thank you.
Seth Nelson, District Three. Neighborhoods are vitally important. When the historic park neighborhood association wants to fight against the highways going up in their district, they turn to me. I represented them in front of City Council, and they're important. When policy of neighbors want to fight to keep their dog park open, they turn to me. I represented them pro bono in front of City Council. These issues are important in this conversation that we began to start a couple months ago. It started years ago, and I love to listen to you, and I want to represent you. One thing I would fight for is to change the rules when you appear in front of City Council. You need notice, an opportunity to be heard. It makes no sense to me that the person bringing the project gets twenty minutes, and every individual gets three, the neighborhood doesn't get it. Ladies and gentlemen, please vote. Thank you.
Chris R., District Three. Thank you for having us here tonight and hosting this event. The moderator is here. I probably believe that I've got the vision, your experience, executive management, improvement in leadership, that we need for the difficult future we have towards the day. It's not about me, and it's not about you. To agree, it is ours, but it's about our future, our children's future in this community. This is the greatest place I know to live in the world. I've lived around it with military, and I came home and found just the simple things that had everybody activated. Guess what? Together, partnering, we changed Tampa, and we can continue to do that through neighborhood associations, but it's in partnership with businesses that is adversarial. And we need to find leadership in this community that will continue to take us in those directions. And I'm offering my services if I should be fortunate enough to have your vote on March first. Thank you. Good night.
Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you. Thank you for the City Council, District Three. Thank you very much for inviting me here, and I appreciate you listening. A Frenchman once said that what makes America special, what makes America great is the civic society. Folks like y'all organizing your neighborhoods, y'all point by yourself, not the other man. Neighborhoods are the basis of civics society, that's what makes us great, that's what makes America exceptional. The folks in our neighborhoods are hurting, our neighbors are hurting. We've got folks begging for money on the street corners. We've got folks sitting in traffic, getting begged for money. And the folks that are holding traffic are getting run over on their bikes. We've got to do better. We've got to do better, Tampa deserves that, our neighborhoods deserve better than this. We deserve better. I'm looking for Tampa City Council to win our future. The three things we got to do is we got to get Tampa back to work, I want to make things again here in Tampa, incentivize, incentivize the energy manufacturing. I also want to be Tampa's best economic level employee, and go out there and be our best salesperson, our best salesman. I'm looking for City Council, District Three, and I hopefully sincerely ask you to vote on March first. Thank you very much.
Scott Scarpina, candidate for Tampa City Council, District Two, which is Citywide. I'd like to begin to stress my background in accounting and finance. I've worked with large budgets, I've been held accountable for tasks, and I want to bring that skillset to the City Council. I think that's important. I encourage you, a lot of great candidates here tonight, we need to look for, we need to elect officials that are reasonable and understand that we have to balance our economy with the needs of our neighborhoods. We need a City Council person who's going to be proactive. If there's an issue, it's not set hard for me to reach out to Marvin. If there's an issue with Yanni, we need to reach out to Al. That's important, that's why the neighborhood associations are here. I filed to run for this office twelve months ago, and in that time, I've knocked on three thousand homes, and I've met with business leaders in our community. I've been able to tour the ports, I've toured my cancer center, I've sat down with T. Martin, I've sat down with Hart. I'm educating myself to become the best City Council person in the district today. I've been endorsed by the Tampa police over the incumbent. I've been endorsed by the Tampa firefighters over the incumbent. There's business leaders in the community sticking their neck out to support my campaign over the incumbent. I ask you to vote on March first. Again, my name is Scott Scarpina, candidate for Tampa City Council, District Two, and I appreciate the opportunity.
And they're, we're not even twenty of us up here, something like that, and nobody is mentioned. Yes, neighborhoods are important. Actually, everybody is important. They have to be listened to. They're just what makes the city go somewhere. That's where you need to live, it becomes your home. Just like every neighborhood, just like every family, so is every neighborhood that we need to listen to. I'm Susan Wong, I'm running in District Two. I want to, in the short run, I want to totally ban pain handling. I want to get a hard handle on the budget. I would like to see zero-based budgeting, in other words, nobody doesn't die, show me where it comes from, why you need it. I would also like to see, I would also like to see more time, or whatever, dedicated to the infrastructure. We were told by Mr. Dagnall this week that in order to meet the budget guidelines, he was requested to be removed, all maintenance from his budget, which means that broken water main, or sewer pipe, or something, and we're going to be... Susan Wong, running District Two, Citywide, appreciate the vote. Thank you.
I'd like to thank all of the candidates for Mark's job. You guys did a great job of answering questions, experiencing, thank you all. But to give announcements, I'd like to thank all of you, and I'd just like to apologize, panelists asked me to apologize that they were not able to get every single question that you posed, asked here tonight, however, the congregation did ask to have the building back for some. I would also like to remind candidates, I'll tell you a great story. I have a very good friend who went around for a couple of months, and he went around and he saw signs on the street corner, and this is kind of a quality of life issue. And it offended him that the signs were popping up all over the place for one particular business, so he made his mission to go out and collect those signs, and I finally asked him, what are you going to do with those? And he thought about it for a while, and he came back to me in a couple of days, and he had cut out the phone numbers with the signs, and cut out part of the business name, and he got a copy of the city ordinance, and he bundled it all together, and he was going to deliver it to the business, and it reminded him that people who teach kickboxing for a living could be dangerous, so he delivered them tonight. I would remind all candidates that signs must be on private property, not on the easel. Thank you all very much.